It being seven o'clock, welcome, good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. This is our January ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting, and our agenda for tonight is seven o'clock visitors. Seven oh five, approval of minutes. Seven ten P M. at Teaching and Learning Highlight. The college board's seventh annual A P district honor roll with Ms. Myers-Peckla and some wonderful F H S students. Seven twenty, we have F H S overnight travel with Ms. Myers-Peckla. Seven thirty-five, we have our F I, F Y eighteen, contin- budget, continued discussion with Ms. Spinelli and Mr. Youkna. Eight oh five P M., we're going to have our discussion of the F Y eighteen capital improvement plan draft with Mr. Youkna. Eight twenty-five P M., we're going to discuss our two thousand seventeen community report, formerly the district report card, with Ms. Spinelli and Dr. Bairdus. At eight forty-five P M., we have acceptance of donation, the Exxon Mobile Educational Alliance Program. Eight fifty, we'll discuss the by-county collaborative quarterly report, and nine oh five P M., other matters. Do we have any visitors that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have before us the December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments or changes? I do not. Anyone?
Nope.
Would anyone like to make a motion about these minutes?
Motion to approve.
All second. Thank you. All those, any further discussion of the minutes?
I'm going to abstain as I was not here.
That is fine. All those in favor? Four, zero, one abstention. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda then is the seven ten P M. teaching and learning highlight. This is great. Ms. Myers-Peckla, will you come to our?
I will, but only if the students join me, so come on up.
And you can all introduce yourselves.
Absolutely. We're gonna call on you.
And while everybody's getting situated, I also wanted to welcome Mrs. McCarthy and Mr. Stanton and Mrs. Abrams to our meeting this evening, since they're in the audience. Thank you for coming on.
While they get settled, I think it's great that they're here because while Mrs. Myers-Peckla's presenting the teaching and learning highlight, it certainly speaks to the efforts of all of our faculty and students, starting at the very youngest age and leading up to when they actually hit it out of the park.
That is absolutely correct.
So, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for the students coming. This was kind of last minute because this just arrived on our doorstep late last week. So, I am very excited to let you all know that Foxborough has been, we've met the criteria, I shouldn't say that we've been selected, we've met the criteria to be named for the third year in a row to the A P honor roll. And it is quite a distinction, I feel, both for our faculty, our staff, and especially our students. And with that, I'll also say thank you ahead of time for all the hard work that these students have done, that our teachers have done, and to thank the school committee as well as the community for being so supportive of the programs that we really want to provide for students so that they can find their pathways as we go along. So, this year, there were four hundred and thirty-three schools who were invited in to the honor roll. And it is based upon information that comes between the years of two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen, so it is data that is accumulated over that time period. There are percentages that you need to do increases in on the A Ps. There are also an increase that they're looking for in our minority groups within the district taking A Ps and our maintaining at least a three plus at the seventy or above percentage for our students scoring on the A P tests. Currently, we offer A Ps in all of these areas, from our sciences to our math, to our English, to our social studies, and our electives as well with our English M. We also do have students who will take A P courses if we don't offer them through V H S, so I also think it's important to recognize that aspect as well. Although, we are hoping to have a computer science A P course here in the next year to two years, so taking that out of the V H S and adding it to our own as we do go along. So, we have had students over the past four or five years who have participated at different times in the other A P classes as well. That wasn't me. And just a couple of stats to give you, because I really want the students to be able to speak. But looking back in two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and twenty-seven total students who were participating in A P. And then if you take a look through two thousand sixteen, which was last year, that number has gone up to two hundred and twenty students altogether. And I think what's also very remarkable for our students is the fact that in two thousand and twelve, we had two hundred and forty exams that were given because a student may be taking more than one A P class. And last year, our students participated in four hundred and fifty-eight exams. So, these numbers have continued to increase. And our A P students with scores, this is the actual numbers of a three plus, of course, based upon the numbers of students that you have participating in the courses. We were at a hundred and seven in two thousand and twelve and up to a hundred and sixty-two this past June. And then just the last, the last numbers in there, the top number in that bottom going across are the total number of A P students in Fo- at Foxborough High School. The percentage who were scoring the three or better. And that's compared to at the bottom, those two numbers, in that first column, it's easiest if you look there. It got kind of messy, so I took out the M's and the G's and the others. But in two thousand and twelve, that M represents the other percent, that's Massachusetts, the percent of students in Massachusetts who were taking, and the G is globally. So, those same numbers travel across the bottom, so you can see how we did. That's the top number in the bottom row across, as we compared to the state of Massachusetts and as we compared globally to students who were taking the exams.
Let's just pause on this for a second, because this is the first time I've seen it in this particular chart form too. So, what you're saying is in a four to five-year period, the number of students taking A P has gone from one twenty-seven to one forty to one sixty-three to one ninety-two, and last year was at two hundred and twenty. So, pretty dramatic. And that the number of A P exams taken by Foxborough High School students has almost doubled. And that in the bottom, when you look at Massachusetts, which we know has very high achievement compared to the rest of the country, we are significantly above the percentage of total exams where students scored three and above, significantly above even the Massachusetts results, which are significantly above the global.
Yes. Now, our numbers have dipped in the percentage of total A P students with a three or above. I totally expected that. I have been encouraging students since I arrived that I think it is so important, they're heading off to college, they really need to have that, that experience of what is it like to juggle the weight and the expectations of a college course while they're here in high school. So, I've always said, follow your passions, go into an area that maybe you really have a love for, and see where that goes from there. If all else fails, go into the composition in English, because you're gonna be writing no matter what. So, yes, I think some students have absolutely taken a challenge, which might have truly been a challenge for them. And I've always said, it's not about that exam, that exam is just gravy, because it's any given day. And who knows, you know, what your own physical state may have been on that day, whatever it might have been. But the reality is, we've got an increase in the numbers of students, and that's what we're excited about for our kids. And just as a, as a pause, as an aside, because I do want to turn it over to you all, we have been selected, more information will be coming, I believe it's the next meeting for the program of studies. We had applied in for and have been selected to become a part of a cohort group for the A P courses that will be a research and a capstone project. It's two different courses over two different years. And students who opt to take those two courses will receive a separate certificate from the A P, the college board, for having participated in those two courses. If they take those two courses, plus, I believe it is four, I'm sorry, don't hit my stats here in front of me, four additional A P classes over their time in high school achieving a three or better, they receive a college board or an A P diploma, which is just another recognition for students who have put that time and effort into doing this work. So, we're very excited about it. As I said, I'll have much more information coming your way. So, that information has just come our way too. So, it's all, it's all really good stuff, and I can't, again, thank everybody, and just kudos to all of you for all of your hard work. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the students, and thank you so much for taking the time tonight. And talk a little bit about the A P courses that you've taken, or I don't know what questions perhaps.
Name, grade, and?
Yeah, I was gonna say name and grade, please.
My name is Lexi Nelson, and I'm a senior along with the rest of the students here. Sophomore year, I took A P Bio and A P U S History. Junior year, I continued with A P U S History, and I also took Calculus, A V, Chemistry, and Spanish. And then, senior year, I'm taking Psychology, Statistics, Physics C, and I forget the other one.
Spanish again?
Oh, and English Literature.
I'm Mary, I'm a senior, as Lexi mentioned.
Again, please.
I'm Mary. So, my junior year, I took A P Chemistry, A P Lang. And this year, I'm taking A P Art, A P Bio, and A P Lit.
Hi, I'm Ethan Hex. Sophomore year, I took U S History One. Junior year, I took U S History Two, along with Eng- ah, sorry, English Language and U S Government. And this year, I am taking Studio Art, English Literature, Calculus, Physics, and I feel like, well. Did I say English? Oh, English Literature, sorry.
It's been a long day, don't worry.
That's a lot of classes to be taking.
So, none of these kids are gonna have to take any credits the first freshman year of college, because they've already done it here at Foxborough High.
I just want, if I could just also mention, I just wanted to say, I guess, to Lexi, because I wanted to make sure. But Lexi, but Lexi scored a perfect score on her A P Spanish exam, and I don't know if you?
I remember seeing that in the function.
We had that in the packet of points, too.
Anyway, congratulations to you for that. It was so exciting for her.
And I think there's several fives at this table, and not to leave Alex out.
And Alex, tell us about what you've taken too.
I took, well, you all know me, I'm Alex, I'm a senior. I took U S History One as a sophomore as well. And then, last year, I took U S History Two, which is just the second year. A P Government with Ethan, and English Language. And this year, I'm in English Literature, Psychology, Physics, and French.
What advice would you have for younger kids who aren't sure if they should take an A P, if they, like, what advice do you have? Is this more, we have more and more kids taking it, is there pros, I know sometimes there's cons, but what advice do you have?
The advice I would give them is to take, like, to find a balance, like, there are a lot of students who want to take, like, six A Ps, but it's really hard to, like, get into the full depth of the course material if you do too many. But I would also advise them to push themselves. The good thing about the A Ps is that they're kind of standard courses throughout a lot of schools, so there are a lot of resources online, books you can order to study. And if the students are interested in taking them, they can find out a lot of information online prior to taking them, because they're, you, all the students, I mean, sorry, all the teachers really have to teach to the test, so they can't really, like, go too far out of that curriculum.
I would say time management is huge in taking A Ps, and taking one A P and doing really well and focusing on that is better than taking, like, four or five, and like, that's writing yourself really thin.
That's great advice. What about you, Ethan?
My advice would just be, I don't underestimate it, the amount of work you're going to need to put into it, because it looks very good on a college resume, you learn a lot from the course. But each one of the courses will be some of the hardest you take in the high school curriculum. So, don't assume that it's just inner, us, more intense version of the course. There is going to be a lot more homework, a lot more projects, the tests are harder. So, it's just something to keep in mind when considering taking one.
It's pretty solid advice.
Very good.
That was, that's nice.
Yeah, my advice to younger kids would definitely be to take an A P Language, because, um, language is just so important that I think that every high school student should take it at the college level. And also, A P Languages don't have tests during the year. Spanish doesn't have tests, right, during the year?
No, focus more on writing.
Yeah, like, in French, we've had one quiz at the beginning of the year on grammar. And beyond that, it's just speaking in labs where you record yourself, and then you can actually go back and listen. So, recently, in my class, we listened to our recordings from the beginning of the year versus the most recent ones to see the difference. And then, other than that, it's just writing assignments. And speaking every day in a different language, and sometimes speaking very great in a different language, is very important, and it definitely is healthy and beneficial to your mind. And honestly, I think it's what's contributed to me doing better in other classes. I think definitely language is one of the most important things to take.
Four very different, but terrific.
All, all great advice, I, I hope my kids are listening at home. And I don't want to embarrass anybody, but I also know that these students are very accomplished in athletics. And we have an Eagle Scout, Ethan, we have a talentist artist, we have a debater. I mean, they're, they're not, you know, the sum total of their grades, they are very well-rounded students as well, so.
Can I just make one more comment?
Yes, absolutely.
Besides Spanish, or besides language, another excellent thing, I didn't mean to alienate the students who don't take A P languages, foreign languages, things like art are, I think, just as valuable. Like, Ethan's in Studio Art and Mary's in, what's your art area?
It's also Studio Art.
Studio Art. I think that's just as good. I don't know what the other A P arts that are being taught, but personally, having taken art, I think that's on the same level.
Personally, not able to do any art whatsoever, I am in awe of this, what the students, and our A P students come in the spring. I know, I, I know Ethan got a Scholastic Art Award last year, maybe Mary did too, I'm not remembering everybody, but the, the product that you all produce is just awesome. Committee?
Is C bad one of the A Ps, or no? No?
No, don't believe so.
Or graphics, no?
It's on the other side of it.
Okay.
They have two D, which is more generalized.
What do they have? The two D?
Two D, yeah.
Okay.
And it is filmed in that portfolio. You know, that's not an exam base, the, the exam are really those pieces, everything, those pieces are together under that theme.
I just want to point out that I saw those two hundred and twenty students took the test, which is a little more than half of the seniors and juniors from last year.
Uh, well, four hundred and some, so it's about.
Yeah, so that's, that's usually unheard of at schools, and that, that's a great accomplishment itself. And I agree with what you said about the test, the test is just that, but even saying that, you still scored well above. And I'm just gonna wait for Alex to mention the A P U S History.
She's happy with the language, now getting history. You made one committee member happy with the language and the creativity. He's waiting for you to wax eloquent about.
History.
History is definitely the A P class that, I think it's taken a lot more than all the others. And being two years, when you can start it as a sophomore, but you don't take the test sophomore year, I think that's a fantastic introductory.
I was gonna ask what you thought of that as a two-year class, and, and as a way to get your, I don't want to say get your feet wet, but get introduced to the rigor of an A P without the pressure of taking an A P exam, you know, at the end of your sophomore year.
I think that there's definitely, like, you can, I can see why you might want A P U S History. An individual might want it to be a one-year course, to a little bit more accelerated. But the fact of the matter is, because so many kids are taking it, and there's quite a few kids who maybe won't go on to take more A P classes, it needs to match for everybody. So, I think that being two years is a, is a great choice. It's definitely a great introductory A P.
Yeah, I, thank you for that point.
Because Ms. Larnigan's excellent, so is Ms. Strico, and I had a lot of fun with Ms. Strico.
We're lucky to have two excellent teachers teaching that class, definitely.
That's so great.
Does anybody else want to add anything? Anyone?
I'll, I'll just share what's going through my mind, which is, I think it's pretty well documented that this is one of Mrs. Myers-Peckla's fundamental beliefs. And I, I know I've said this each year, but thank you for encouraging so many of the students to push themselves. What, what year are you in here, Diana, remind me?
I came in the fall of twelve.
Twelve.
Well, July of twelve.
In this position, but she has many years in our system.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think your data showed from twelve on, and I don't think it's any surprise that we have going up every year.
It has doubled.
So, it's a nice legacy that Ms. Myers-Peckla's leaving here, I think.
I really appreciate that statement, because we talked about it quite a bit when I, but that's one of the first things she said to me when she was interviewing to come here, that she wanted to accomplish. But I would say that the change between two thousand and twelve, when she arrived, and sixteen are still, are still more than I expected, exceeded my expectations. I knew we would see a result, because I know how passionate you are about it and other things you've done in other communities, but this has been just a tremendous boon to what we offer in terms of our academic programs at the high school. And it is her vision, and I totally compliment you on that.
Thank you.
And it was, want to thank our other principals who are here, because if kids can't be prepared to take these challenging courses without a solid foundation at the elementary and middle school, so that they're ready for it. So, I hope you feel you've got that kind of education all along the way.
It's nice to, nice to always have a chance or an opportunity to recognize our principals, because I think those involved with the schools know how hard and tirelessly they work. And just to single out Diana as an example, I mean, I know how many hours she's here and committed and while managing things at home and family of her own, and so, we appreciate what all you do.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. So, support is here, so I can't thank you all enough, and this is part of the benchmarks. And I was gonna be thrilled at, you know, that, that three to five growth, and so, when I wind up seeing that the numbers are so much more than that, it's exciting, and we'll plateau, and that's gonna happen, but as long as we still continue to encourage our students.
One of your slides said it broken out by large district, medium districts, small, is Foxborough considered a small district?
I believe we are, and I.
So, that percentage was eleven percent growth. I, I wanted to point that out, because it said, I think it was four, six and eleven, but the small was eleven. And I mean, that's a, a significant percentage growth, so.
And it's unusual to make it three years consecutively, I want, I meant to point that out too. Usually, you know, if you get on it once, great, twice in a row, great, but it's hard to continue to maintain that growth, so.
Well, I think success would get success, so we're seeing our students succeed and, and plow through the material and learn and challenge themselves, and then other students want to do it. So, thanks to all of you for setting such great examples for our younger students and, and for encouraging kids to challenge themselves, stretch themselves, it's great.
So, again, thank you, and thank you to all of you.
Thanks for all your input.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Wonderful, very impressive.
Does anybody else have anything? Yes, congratulations, thank you.
We have great kids here, and when they show us what they can do, there's nothing better than that.
Absolutely. Thanks, guys.
And good luck with your A P exams, all three of you.
While the other principals are here, before we move on, Michelle, I just want to mention, I have this under other matters, but since we have Michelle here, I know that you have school committee in your packet, that another distinction this year, Mrs. McCarthy's school, the Borough Elementary School, was named for the second consecutive year to the two thousand and sixteen Massachusetts Commendation Schools as the, as the Department of Education designates. And that is for the, it's for, wait a minute, I gotta go. For narrowing proficiency gaps, so among the different types of constituent groups we have in the students. So, it's the second year in a row, they have narrowed their proficiency gaps. So, I want to commend all of them for their hard work, and to you, Michelle, for your leadership of that. So, it's a good time, rather than wait till other matters are here, and we can all clap for that too.
It's really great news.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Right, so Diana, I think, we'll keep Diana.
Just before we forget, hopefully, Michelle, you, you need to get a picture that Debbie can put on her Twitter account when you're at the State House next Friday. Okay? For all of us, on the steps. Is that next Friday?
No, that's, no, that, it's in February, but the deadline for response is coming up.
Sorry, I was just looking at the date. Whenever you go, get a picture.
Yes, absolutely. I'm gonna go with her. Take it myself.
Now, we're not letting Diana go, she's our, our next item on, on the agenda is F H S overnight travel.
I believe you all have a copy of what's here, and there really isn't anything new. Our Spanish exchange, the Student Council Conference that takes place annually in Hyannis, the All-State Music Festival, the DECA State Championship, of course, if we qualify, and of course, we're going to qualify. The All-Easteren Festival in Atlantic City, the History Club's trip to New York. History Club usually does something every year, this year it's going to be New York City. DECA, again, continuing on to the international competition in Anaheim, California. I volunteered to chaperone should they need anybody during that time, but. And our Festival of Music in Toronto and Ottawa, and then essentially Ellington, which we will be recording for in another week or so.
I know sometimes we have out-of-state track meets, I don't see any on here. Does that mean we haven't, you know, been, I know that, that those are qualifying meets and invitationals, but I know we need to approve them thirty days in advance, so I just wanted to make sure.
We do, and I did not realize that until tonight, when I took a look at this. So, I will double-check on that one with, with Miles, to see what they're planning on doing.
It's not uncommon to come back with one or two.
No, I know that, I just wanted to mention it, it was just a, a thought in my head. The only other thing, I had asked Janet to put on everybody's desk the travel alerts. I know we discussed this last year, and just to be aware, we discussed it at length. There is a European travel alert that will expire on February twentieth, so halfway through our Spanish exchange. But I just, I know last year we discussed, you know, that it's really not an issue for us, that it's a parent issue to decide whether to send their kids, and that we support this trip. But just to be aware, that these alerts are out there, they're on the, the Spanish Embassy's website for people to look at and maybe make sure that our parents are making wholly informed decisions before they send their kids overseas.
And there was a, a parent meeting last week that did take place regarding that too, so.
Excellent.
One of the things that we were just, I was talking with the department head, Karen Fraser, about today, is that, you know, oftentimes a parent can't reach their child, but we're on a completely different schedule, and sometimes you just don't have the connections when you're traveling. So, one of the things that I had suggested, and we were trying to figure this out, so we are going to go with it, but not only do the parents have both of the advisor numbers, but also our counterpart on the other side, because they are a person, or they are people who do speak English fluently as well as the language, so that if for some reason they couldn't make a connection, it's not that we would have a better chance of it here, but on the other side, they could always place that phone call, just to say, I haven't heard from my son or my daughter, could you please pass that message on to the advisors, and we'll make sure that they then do that, so. Just that one more piece of making sure.
WhatsApp is really good for, like, if Juliet traveled a lot, and if Matthew was just abroad for his first semester, WhatsApp is that, so you don't have, because you can't get into the connection of, like, your variety plan or anything. So, WhatsApp really works well, just for messaging in every day, making sure everyone's alive.
And they had talked about that one, I believe, as well, because I.
That works fabulously.
I had worked, I had asked about the WeChat, which is another one, so as long, well, that's a China connection, the Asian connection too. So, as long as you've got that internet connection, then you can do that, it's only with the internet.
Right, if you're on the internet connection.
But at least they're free calls.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's a free connection.
Aren't we lucky to have these means of communication anyway?
Very important when you're traveling.
I went on one European exchange, and when I was a sophomore in high school, I'm sure my parents put me on the plane, and I didn't, they didn't hear from me until they picked me up at Logan the following week, so.
Yes, and there's a whole chain.
Aren't we lucky, as far as?
You know, there's a whole telephone chain too, just in case, so.
All right, does anyone have any other questions, concerns, thoughts on the different trips?
This is so exciting, and such a vital out-of-classroom experience. Our school is wonderful in doing this, and kudos, I mean, to arrange your New York City field trip for history is great, but the extent of planning that goes into a Spanish exchange or a French exchange, I wish the public could really understand the depth and the time and the enrichment. It's incredible, so kudos to our high school again.
Absolutely. Pass that on.
Well, perhaps we can have our students come and speak to their experience after they've had their trip. They've had both ends of it, they've had their student here, and we had some of our students at the reception in the fall, and then maybe they can come back and chat with us.
And just within the past couple of days, I've received an email from Miguel Angelusa. And he has been diligently, since he went home, gathering all information since we started with Valencia. And he's hoping there's going to be some sort of display, and that will be all ready to bring to Foxborough the next time we come for the history of, of our Spanish exchange.
That's fabulous. There's nothing like making those personal connections, you know, when you can like that, so to have those sister schools, so.
Bruce, did you have something?
Just, just a thought, of the nine trips here, Diana's seven have been approved in the past by the school committee. Of the two that haven't been, one's in New York City, one's in Anaheim. Because of just the distance of the, the one in Anaheim, perhaps Mr. McCabe could come back if they qualify, and just give us some details about.
Sure, I'm sure he'd be happy to.
Actually, shouldn't that have an asterisk? Because they did approve DECA International when it was in Nashville last year.
When it was in Nashville, yes.
So, that actually should have an asterisk.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
Well, I mean, technically, we've approved the History Club trip as well.
We have. It's been a different location.
He just, he moved his location.
Oh, the location. Oh, I'm sorry. Totally, I misunderstood. Yeah.
Although the Festival of Music goes from location to location too. So I don't know.
They've done Toronto in the past. So perhaps that's it.
That is right. It rotates. It's Toronto, Washington DC, New York and Philadelphia. So this year it's Toronto.
Where was the DECA last year?
Nashville.
Nashville.
Nashville to the International, yeah. Yeah, so Mr. Ferbert does a wonderful job with his History Club trip. I know the kids have a wonderful time.
Yeah, itinerary looked great.
Is itinerary, yeah.
Something to think about.
I know both my children are actually going on that one. It's a good trip. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that our overnight travel will be accepted as presented.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. I'm going to post. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you very much, everyone.
And Happy New Year.
Mr. Yukna, Mrs. Spinel, you're up. FY18 budget.
While Bill's getting ready, since the last meeting, I haven't gotten any individual committee questions about the budget or any additional information you wanted us to bring back. So Bill's going to highlight a few things. What we did bring back is what we stated at this table last time, which was we're going to bring back information about staffing changes over the last 12 years and the whys and wherefores of that to be able to have all of us understand that a little bit better so that we can explain to the public if we're asked. So we do have that and Bill has a few other updates for you when the screen becomes active. Did anybody have any preliminary questions while we're waiting for our presentation to go up? Anything else that you were thinking about budget here?
Why, I had talked to Mr. Yukna earlier today about talking a little bit about the homeless transportation issue and reminding, you know, that our community, that we're required to pay that. That it's not something that's voluntary, that it's required, we're required by law. And, you know, just to give a little bit of background on that.
That's helpful. I think people need to think about that, just like they think about the special education law and IEPs. Those are legal issues that are driven, that a community has an obligation to fund. And the same with the homeless, the rights of homeless.
And I believe the homeless one is the law because if somebody goes homeless during the school year, they want to have at least something comfortable that they have.
Right. And the consistency for the, so that's actually governed by a federal law that can even to that.
That's right. And I know we've talked about it before, but it's worth revisiting in the context of this coming, this upcoming budget season, for this current budget season.
Just give me a second. I had to restart it.
I wish we had the Jeopardy music. I could cue that.
And actually, I think the first place to start is really on the budgets that we discussed last week, or two weeks ago. And that is with the, there was some misinformation on that because of percentages and values in the budget itself. On the presentation that we did, the, it was about the fourth page. Sorry, fifth page, where we did the overall budget at $34,089,604.
So that number is?
So that number is correct. What happened, and it was correct further on in the documentation, but this particular page didn't get changed. I think I explained that there was, we found an error between FY16 and FY17's, FY16's total. When we corrected it, the actual increase was the $1,120,294, which again, was further in the presentation correctly. It was wrong on this page. But that also was being calculated against the FY15 budget. So the percentage, instead of being 3.53 increase, it's actually a 3.4% increase year over year. So I just wanted to point that out. You did see that in your minutes as just a note of the change itself, but.
If you could replace what's in your notebook with the one that Bill gave you tonight, that'd be avoid future confusion, if you will. But the 3.4% increase, which is lower than you would have before, is accurate. Appreciate Bill's attention to detail on that. Well, we're still having some technical problems, though.
Just as a soundbite, we may have covered this in the past, and I know I was pretty vocal last meeting about our budget and explaining some of the things, because we were in absence of our other budget subcommittee member. But just for the public, the 3.4% increase that Mr. Yukna just talked about is the lowest annual increase as a percentage of our overall budget in the last four years.
Yes.
So I think that's noteworthy. Needless to say, the budget goes up year after year for the reasons we've been discussing at this table. But as a percentage, we are the lowest we've been in four years, which I think is a good thing.
So, and as Deb pointed out, one of the added pieces of information that we've supplied you with, which directly obviously relates to this budget and comments that we've heard recently, is around our employment status versus enrollment. The year 2006 was the, or actually, it was October of 2005, which is the FY06 budget, was the highest level of enrollment that we had in the district. It was 3,006 students. The comment that's been out there, which is inaccurate, and I wanted to kind of put this to the committee as well as to the public to straighten it out, was that during this timeframe, while our enrollment has dropped, that the school committee made no changes to staffing relative to the, you know, the change in enrollment. And the reality is, as you'll see in the sheets that I provided you, we've actually dropped 12.6 teaching positions in the K through, K through 12 enrollment.
In the general classroom.
General classrooms. And obviously, if you look at where the enrollment has changed, it's changed the most on the elementary level. That's where we took the most positions down. And we, and on the middle school, a little bit less, we took a little bit less and so on. So we have actually been making adjustments relative to the, you know, staffing based on enrollment. The difference is, and while we are up in overall staff, we are up for specific reasons and reasons that the school committee has endorsed as well as the community. The first one is full-day kindergarten. In 2006, we only offered half-day kindergarten, which I think Ms. Spinel pointed this out last time. It only took one teacher to do two classes. Now, obviously, with full-day, it takes a teacher for each one of those classes. And therefore, we've gone up 5.5 teachers and 5.5 ed assistants for a total of 11 since the 2006 timeframe. Special needs programs have gone up just under 11 overall. The biggest part of that is under ed assistance, which is in a lot of cases, one-to-one activity with students based on IEP needs. But we do also have 2.5 additional teachers in that area. And again, the reason for that is really, we tried to bring in-house programs that we were paying large dollars outside for. And this was a way to service those children in, with their peers and in their own community, rather than sending them out. And so not only did it have a cost implication to the community, it also had what we felt was a beneficial implication to the students and being in the learning environment.
And one of those, remember just two years ago when Dr. Einzel was here, we were creating a new program at the elementary level because we had a small cohort of students with diagnoses that we didn't have a program for. So we created one for that cluster of four to five students who are coming from preschool. So those are all very proactive, cost-saving measures over the long run. And our kids deserve to go to the neighborhood schools with their own staff, first and foremost, if we can do that anyway. So.
Are those the students that came and presented to us last year?
No, that's, it's actually a slightly different program. Similar.
The next area was under additional supports. And obviously, there's a number of things that are here. Assistant principals, both on the middle school and the high school, we went from one and a half to two in each location. Again, in 2006, we did not have the criteria under ed evaluations. We did not have the, you know, as many of the social, emotional issues as we have. And so the supports that the school committee put in, first were at the high school level and then on the middle school level to up the staffing capability on the administration side. In addition, we added, on the elementary side, additional supports for math. And we have now three math specialists where we had one prior, which gives us a math specialist in each one of our elementary schools to obviously support that program of learning. Guidance, I think we've talked a number of times about the social, emotional issues within the schools. We've increased our guidance capability in both the middle school and the elementary level. And the biggest increase was in the high school, but that was reinstating a program that had been eliminated or greatly reduced, I'll say.
It actually was. I don't know, some of you, I mean, some of you will remember back in, under a prior administration, a couple administrations ago, the guidance department at the high school was essentially eliminated. And this was when this committee actually restored that, before I came back in 2007. So right around that period, so right, right, I guess, when I was coming back, right around that, around that, the first year from 2006 to '07, that this started tracking that. So that was a restoration.
And then the final one under the additional supports is the ELS, I guess, teaching position. Again, that's really student-driven. Obviously, we've had an increase in the need in that area. And you supported that only in the last year or two. The athletic, we had 1.5 increase in athletic secretary position. And that was driven by the requirement for us to track all the medical records of students now and deal with any of the issues around concussions and record-keeping on that side. Again, something that didn't exist in 2006. A large increases in technology, 5.5 on our enrollment, I mean, on our staffing level. Again, I want to call out the fact that since 2006, the school department has taken over all technology needs for the town. We manage all the services for every department. The town does support a one position from their side, as well as a small management stipend on their side. But when you think about it, we're running two data centers. We're running probably well over 2,000 computers between school and town at this point in time and at least a dozen servers. The staffing requirement really was driven by this overall growth. In 2006, the number of computers we had, even online compared to what we have today, was significantly different. And it's become a major part of our core curriculum, is to be able to offer and support the technology as we move forward.
I think that's a key thing for us to keep reiterating, though. The town, the shared technology facilities is wonderful. And it benefit, it's a cost savings in all in the town budget. But when you see increased positions, they do sit on our side, acknowledging that that is still, if you look at the whole picture, a cost share. But we do show increased positions because of it.
We have consistently heard from teachers and from our IT people, and we've seen, and students, who have benefited from the technology specialists, the technology integration specialists. They help, they have given to our teachers in instructional technology. And, I mean, we've seen the benefit over and over again. They're not in a classroom, they're in all of our classrooms.
They are.
And it's a ripple effect throughout the district. Yes, that's exactly what I was trying to get at. Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Keep going.
Okay. And then the final area, which represents just about five staff members, really is in two areas, obviously, supporting on the elementary level, the art program. And again, while that's only a 0.7 increase, it's actually spread over all three buildings. And it was really to manage the schedules, which were very difficult to do when you had someone part-time trying to move from building to building. We weren't able to give the services that we were trying to.
You know what else it's done too, Bill, that we often don't like talk to a little things? The other thing that that's done at the elementary level, it's allowed therapeutic art for some of our classes, like the new programs we create, that it's an equity issue. Those two, those kids too have a right to go to art taught by an art specialist who's certified, a certified teacher, and not just do crafty things in a self-contained classroom, but to actually go out to other classes and to be able to go to integrated art. And that's, we've been able to do that in art and wellness and music as well. So that just, it might only be one or two periods, maybe three periods a week. But this little bit of increase in 0.7 across the three schools has really allowed, not even, has really allowed us to provide that, which is the right thing to do when it's an equity issue.
It's actually added even another value, and that is with allowing common planning time with teachers. Where, because we can block appropriately within each building, now the teaching on different levels could also have their planning time at the same time to make, to support their curriculum development. And then the final one, again, is a change in the health and PE, where we added two staff members. And that was the graduation requirement, which was pushed by not only the state, but obviously, the school committee supported it for the high school level. So, you know, we do have a 30-person increase net across this whole thing. But it has really been driven by a decrease in actual classroom teaching positions and an increase in service requirements, whether it's town and school-supported or whether it's just, you know, social, emotional and full-day kindergarten. I mean, I think those are your key components to the changes. But I think, I think in clearness to the community, there's been a lot of thoughtful changes within the way this, these budgets have been performed and the way the staffing has been developed.
I think it shows that we've responded to not only new regulations that maybe didn't exist, but also to the desires of the community, the values of the community and the policies that you've set as terms of class size and programs that you want to offer.
I think that's right. And I appreciate you putting it in this form. I mean, I know, I know since I've been on the committee, when I was on the advisory committee, I sat through all the budget discussions of the school committee. I know each and every one of these positions was discussed at this table at length and debated about whether it was necessary, not necessary, ultimately concluding that they were necessary or that the reductions were necessary. But it is, when you put it all together, it's very helpful to understand what has happened over the last, you know, 10 years and what, where the decision-making has come from. And, you know, and why we've made the decisions we've made. And that it's been supported by the community, the arts education, the wellness education, the technology, you know, the social, emotional issues, I mean, the need for guidance and.
But I think to supplement that, we've also gotten a lot of questions about if the enrollment is trickling down, why haven't we adjusted? And this does show, we have actually cut, oh, close to 13 positions in general education due to declining enrollment. But that doesn't mean that there aren't other needs that have grown the positions as well.
That's right. That was very helpful. Thank you, Bill.
Are there any other questions or concerns in the operating budget side?
I think you and I had talked about talking a little bit about the homeless transportation item. If you wouldn't mind going, talking about that a bit.
Yeah. The, on homeless transportation, obviously, it is a state law, so it's not optional, district optional thing. But when it first started, probably about four, five years ago, as far as the cost to the community, I think the first year, we were about $7,000 or $8,000. It kind of went into a track for three years where it grew fairly significantly. I think we got up to $38,000 in our high year on it. Last year, it dropped back significantly. It was under $15,000. And, you know, this year, we're kind of proposing that, you know, keep the budget at the same because we don't really know, there's no, you know, it could be a student for a week. It could be for a month. It could be for a multiple period of time. It could be a number of students. And I think the comment I heard earlier was that what the state has basically dictated is that you will allow that child to come back into the district, even if they're not able to find housing in it. So in a simple concept, if you thought of a family that for whatever reason was displaced to Walpole, we would have to then go out and contract for transportation to pick that child up and bring him back to our school district to continue their education while they're in that homeless status. Obviously, best of all worlds, things are resolved for the family and they're able to come back into the community. It goes away, or they make a decision to move into another community in a total basis and stay there. So, but up until that point in time, there is a relationship with us. There is, depending on the situation, where it could be a shared relationship with us in another community. And then the final piece to that is that in the end, whatever we can actually isolate, and that's why this has become a separate account by itself, the state has been giving us about a 50% reimbursement to cover that cost. Because again, it's one of their edicts as to a thing to do. They're not giving you 100%, but at least they are putting something more. And that goes back to the general fund. It does not come back to our budget. But at the end of the year, when I do my, my end-of-year report, basically, once they see that information, they go out to all the communities, they see how much it all totals up, how much money they have available, and then they'll tell us how much they get. But for the last four years or so, it has been around 50% that we've gotten back.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions on the operating budget?
Just a thought, which we've brought up in the last few discussions. But does anybody know if Mr. Scollins has come back to the selectmen with thoughts about abatement for the seniors?
I actually think it's on their agenda for tomorrow night's meeting, so we will listen. I agree with you. I certainly hope that we are able to give our seniors some relief. I, there was one other thing, you just reminded me, you know, when we were discussing the abatements. We have discussed, you and I had a little conversation earlier about the fees and maybe quantifying what the fact that we have no fees for athletics, for transportation, for parking permits at the high school or anything like that, you know, giving an idea of what sort of number that would look like. for parking permits at the high school, or anything like that, you know, gi- giving an idea of what sort of number that would look like for the average, you know, family that has two kids in Foxborough.
And again, I haven't, I've, I've actually reached out to, uh, my, uh, compatriots in the, in the surrounding towns, and they'll come back pretty quickly. But if you think about it in the general sense, you know, a lot of communities have the transportation fees. On a family of two to three, that can easily get to five hundred dollars for the family. Many of them have athletic fees. Uh, they do cap, you know, if you have three or more, they'll cap how much you pay. But it, it is very easy to get to a thousand dollars in a family, uh, based on most of these, um, you know, I know it could be much higher, but.
Well, Amy, Amy's over here adding up in her head, because she lives in a community where she pays fees. So she's going like this, which it can get pretty significant.
So it depends on what fees are in place. Some have done just transportation, but some have done transportation, uh, athletics and, and virtually anything.
Sometimes extracurricular activities in clubs, sometimes parking.
Parking, yeah, hard parking.
So, and I kind of equate that to what Foxborough did a number of years ago when it came to trash. And that was, you know, we didn't have the room in our tax, uh, side of our budgets, so it was pushed out while the taxpayer's still paying for it. So, there's two ways to look at it. You can create a, a tax that is in tuitions and in fees and schedules, or you can do it under a controlled environment where everything is, is under one place and has the single control of the school committee and keep it on the budget side of things. And I think most, most families would, uh, agree that the right way to keep it is under the one budget where they can see everything that their, their, their cost for education is in one place. And in fairness to the community, it's, it's, you know, as families come through, they all benefit the same way.
That's right. I agree with that. Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we, we had that. As I know, we've, we've discussed the importance of not having fees for our families in town
Absolutely.
and our, um, in our, in the context of our budget, I, I see it. I know we're going to talk about our community report in a little while, and that is something we emphasize there. But quantifying it, it's not a small amount of money. We're not talking about, you know, tiny numbers. This would be a big number, you know, that you would have, that, that, that the, the citizen, the parents would have to bear.
It's quite a lot. And on, on that related note, I know our, we discussed this at length with our budget subcommittee members, so thank you. But, uh, tomorrow starts kindergarten registration. So, um, the letter is going to say that we expect to offer a full-day kindergarten, but it is dependent on the successful approval of the school budget at town meeting. And I think we've made it very simple, and then at the end, it just, and why we believe in full-day programs. And at the end, it just said, if, for some reason, it's not approved as proposed, then we may have to reinstitute, um, a fee-based full-day program.
Hopefully, we'll come to that. We will see.
So, register your children starting tomorrow, so we can get really early. Look at our numbers, please, everyone.
Yeah, and, and to Deb's point, we won't be asking for a deposit at this point.
We won't.
So there's no reason for somebody not to sign up if they truly believe they're going to be sending their child to the kindergarten program early. Again, that will just give us a little bit more clarity towards our budget requirements as well, uh, on the kindergarten level.
Yeah, we can get a little help from our friends at the reporter, just letting them know about the, uh, opportunity to sign up for kindergarten. Thank you, sir.
Thanks. That's good. All right, anything you'd like us to bring back for the next meeting, which is when you deliberate and hopefully vote on your budget? Anything else you think?
Feel free to just drop me an email, and I can do that as well, so if you're not thinking about.
If there's anything you'd like us to elaborate on, like we did tonight with the enrollment increases, we'd be happy to do that. I want to thank Bill for putting that together. It's no easy feat to track staffing positions one by one over the course of many, many years. But I, I, I know it was, it's certainly a difficult exercise, but I think it's great to have that documented. And it'll be helpful going into the future, I think.
I, I agree.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Yeah, and, and again, just like we do our, our budget as far as payroll, that is actually based on the actual two thousand and six payroll against our proposed FY eighteen actual ba- payroll. So, it's, there's real bodies, real things behind the whole thing, um, and all the backup sheets that equal that, um, are easily documented, so.
All right. Thank you.
So our next thing is on the capital improvements plan. We have the usual suspects, um, as far as our upgrades to computers, the upgrades or replacements of our, uh, busing, um, copier replacement. And, uh, the one thing that's been discussed and actually has been put on by the town side within their budget process as something to bring forward this year, uh, which is the completion of the turf field, uh, complex, which would be the eight-lane track in the bleachers. As far as the upgrades to, uh, the networking and, this used to be a category of just buying computers. Obviously, we're far beyond that. You know, interactive whiteboards, as we use to display during these meetings, are in almost all of our classrooms. And obviously, the projectors have a life, just like a computer has a life. Our network, fortunately, is relatively new. Uh, we did most of that upgrade, uh, two years ago. So, we're not really looking at, uh, servers and, and things of that, uh, point. But, uh, we continue to look at our, uh, even our newest wireless devices to make sure that we can keep the, uh, the speed moving. And even wireless devices we put in, uh, four short years ago, uh, already are getting taxed based on the amount that we're, we're, uh, adding to the, uh, the network itself. And so we're looking at obviously ways to, um, you know, continue that to move forward as well. So this has become an overall, uh, requirement now. So it's, it's computers, it's network, uh, servers, it's software. You know, it's not the small things like printers and things of that nature, but it's, it's our bigger, uh, network stuff. And, you know, at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, it's, it's been something that's been supported by the town since FY ten. Quite honestly, it's one of those areas that if the town falters on it, it just, uh, creates a much bigger hole down the road. So by, by being consistent with it, um, over a period of time, you maintain a certain level, uh, of expense annually, and you allow yourself to continue, um, moving forward with technology as it moves forward.
It also speaks to the consolidation again, because without the consolidation, you would see capital, um, requests for server upgrades on the town side and a separate one on our side, which is always more costly to do it twice than.
Yes.
And, and the reality is there, because we again manage the data centers, most of the support equipment for the network and stuff actually has been covered by our budgets. So again, this is, that's one of the things that does this as well. School bus replacement, um, I had actually hoped that this would be a year that we'd only have two, uh, coming forward. But, um, right now, we're at the point where we have three, um, and it looks like the next, uh, three years, we would be down to two. Two of them are the seventy-seven passenger large buses, um, the two we would replace. While they don't have, uh, as high a mileage base as we normally would look at, which is usually in a hundred thousand, they are over the ten-year cycle and, and, uh, both have been, kind of been put on a, um, a warning list by the town's mechanic as far as the amount of under-body rot and, uh, issues that way. You know, obviously, they're safe to be on the road still, but he's very concerned based on the amount of work that would have to be done to them as we move forward, uh, if we keep them on the road. We have always had a cycle of basically ten years. And that, quite honestly, with salt and sand and, and, you know, this part of the country, it's, it's what you can expect out of, of these vehicles. We do, obviously, we always get a, um, you know, a, um, trade-in value. My anticipation is hopefully we'll get a little higher trade-in value of these, because the mileage is lower. But again, anybody looking at it, it's also going to be looking at the age of it. Most service contracts, if you're outside of us, where we obviously run our own buses, but if you're in a town that is, um, hiring an outside service to do their transportation, their contracts will specifically state that the buses can't be over ten years old. So I think it's a, it's a pretty much proven fact that that's where you want to be with these. The, um, smaller thirty-five passenger bus, again, we bought one this year, um, to replace one of our, uh, what we call mini-buses. And the, the next one, um, as you can see already at this point, has a hundred and two thousand miles on it. By the end of the year, uh, we will probably be close to the, um, a hundred and ten thousand mile range. And again, it's a, it's a two thousand and nine, which is less than the ten years. But again, we kind of use two factors as, as our control point, uh, mileage and, and age. Ironically, um, the smaller bus is almost the exact same expense as the larger bus. And the reason for that is that, that when you look at the bus, basically, it's the same exact design, except for the length of the bus itself, same engine, same transmissions. But the mini-buses we've always, we buy, because they're also part of our, our special needs program, are all air-conditioned. And that's really a requirement that we typically would put into any of those because of our summer transportation needs for that. And so, um, so again, they stay very much in the same ballpark. So be, between the three buses, you're looking at a net number of a hundred and fifty-six thousand for the two larger ones and seventy-seven thousand, uh, for the one, uh, minibus, uh, that we've been buying. And again, mini and thirty-five passengers, not a true mini, it's, it's, it's really, uh, the biggest of the small buses they, they make. That also, quite honestly, um, you know, again, you look at things that, that we do for other parts of the town, but those, but those, uh, the two thirty-five passenger buses that we use, we also use that to transport the, um, recreation program during the summer. Again, to, to help them fill their needs. So while we're doing our summer work with, with the, the students that are in for our summer programs, we're using our drivers at the same time to also take care of moving the kids for the recreation program as well. And again, that's on, you know, the way we deal things, uh, from the town side, so.
Well, also, we have the wheelchair lifts on the, um, smaller buses too, if I make a point of.
Yeah, we have, uh, this is not one of them that would have that, but two of the other ones do have the wheelchair lifts as well. You're correct.
Are those required or not on all minibuses?
Wheelchair? Only required that you have it for your capability. We, we, we technically, um, only have a couple of students that, that we need to transport that way. We have to have the ability to do that. I think actually three out of the five minis, um, have the, uh, the wheelchair left side of it. And, uh, again, it's just, you know, it is a requirement depending on the student's needs, so. But it's not a requirement to have it on all of them. Just need to be able to transport the students you have. As far as copiers go, um, again, a kind of a standard cycle. We try to, to replace at least, uh, four a year, uh, keep them under the state's warranty period, so we have, uh, virtually no service, uh, contract cost on these. Each copier in a three-year period will, um, easily get to about a hundred and, I mean, I'm sorry, one point two to one point five million, uh, copies on it, uh, in three years. We are doing, as I state here, eight million copies a year. And it's just, you know, there is a, a significant number, um, you know, that is required in all of the schools. So we, we again try to keep the equipment running, um, and try to keep the cost, um, as far as repairs and, and maintenance as low as possible. And this cycle has worked very well for us, because we virtually are, uh, replacing them when they're coming right out of those three-year contracts, you know, with the state, uh, bid list. And the, uh, the final component here, obviously, which is the, um, the big-ticket item on completing the, um, Sam Burns Community Field, which is really, um, there was a master plan that was done a couple of years ago by Bay Colony for us, uh, which laid out the full turf field and then, um, laid out the balance of what we were requesting to be done. So it laid out, uh, an eight-lane track around the field. It leaned out, it, uh, laid out where the concession stand would have to be, to be outside of that, that eight-lane track. Obviously, uh, even the Sam Burns and the, uh, Memorial, as well as the scoreboard, had to already have been kind of pre-fit to where they would have to go. That was done in the design. And then the concession stand, um, I'm sorry, not concession stand, the grandstand, uh, area also was laid out in that. So, uh, our master plan has all the components laid out. We know that we have everything that will fit. We have not, obviously, made a misstep here, uh, as far as putting something in that now would have to be taken out. That was something I was, um, even with the Sam Burns thing, with, there was an original concept of putting it one place, and I, and I knew we would have to take it out and move it again. So that's why we commissioned Bay Colony to make sure that we kind of had the full plan laid out before we went any further. The, the cost of doing the eight-lane track is about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, it entails not touching the, the turf field at all. Again, you know, towns have gone with the eight-lane track first, leaving their original field in place, and then having to go over that track to get to that field to replace it. Doesn't always work as well. It's much more expensive. So we've done it, I think, in the right manner, which is inside-out. So the, the turf field would be fine. We'd, we'd have no destructive, uh, actions around it at all. We would put in the track, um, as the, the first thing after that, and then we would do, um, the grandstands. And the concept right now, when you look at it, most of the stadiums are being built with the grandstands on one side. It's the most cost-effective way to do it. It also is the one way to kind of direct, uh, you know, noise and everything from one side. And the, the current plan shows those being on the, um, church or, um, driveway side, so that it's facing towards the tennis courts and things, you know, which are much further away. And obviously, again, the lights and everything were planned based on, you know, where those grandstands would have to go as well. So it's, I, I think we're, we're, we've done the planning we need to do now. It's, it's really a funding, um, source issue. And in conversations that both Deb and Amy and I have had with the town side, uh, we talked about this last year, and, uh, Bill and Randy were supportive on it, and actually, they had already had it on their radar for this year's revenue and, and expense side of things as something that, for us to bring forward. And that's why, obviously, we're presenting it as well, because we strongly believe in it.
The ADA accessible press box area, does that mean it has to have a wheelchair to the press box?
There, there's a couple of ways of doing it, but most aren't doing it with elevators. What they're doing is ramping systems that allow you to get there. So the press boxes no longer end up a hundred feet in the air. They end up at a, at a mid-level, uh, height, which does work, but it's, it's, you know, um, if you really, if, if you want to get a good example of what ours would, our whole setup would look at, um, actually, the King Philip one is very similar to the way our design is. And you'll see that that press box, you know, fits in nicely, gets them enough height to be able to see the game and, and film and broadcast, but it's, it's not, again, way up on stilts away from everything else.
And they have the ramp.
They have a ramp that just allows you to get right up there.
Drive by.
It's the most, you know, cost-effective way to do it.
Bill, how much do you think we've spent per year just busing our, well, the football teams? And, and I don't know, we, now we have a, a shuttle bus for a track. And how much do you think that has been aggregated over the last forty years? Just to throw it out there. Not to put you on this.
I would, I wouldn't even know how to guess that one. I could get it, uh, to be honest with you, because obviously, we track everything we do.
I'm just curious. I mean, I know.
It's daily, you know, quite honestly, it's daily, um, you know, during the seasons that, uh, multiple buses are moving. We're moving them between multiple fields and, and trying to get them around. I think that's, I think that's a piece, but I quite honestly think that's a relatively small piece to the reason for doing this.
Oh, absolutely. But, I mean, I think the, the bigger picture is making a, you know, a one complete campus here at Foxborough High, but it is something that we, we have to do right now.
But speaking to the bigger picture, I think that's important, is, is that we're trying to continue to finish it so that we can make it more and more rentable. There is a, there is a market for renting eight-lane tracks. So, uh, our obligation to, because this is a town field, community field. So our obligation is, is to complete the complex so that the town is more rentable and when we're not using it weekends, summers, so that the town can recoup some of the cost to put away this, to reserve, to replace or repair it when necessary. And the, the estimate for that was ten years, and we're at the five-year mark already.
Well, so there would be an initial outlay, but there's an opportunity for revenue. Plus, we would eliminate an expense, maybe not a huge expense, but one that has probably over time added up to a bit.
That's true.
But maybe self-sustaining.
Yeah, and I would, I would have to say, I think the, um, I don't know, maybe Alex and Dimitri can, can kind of quote this, but I think the, there's a real difference on a, on the high schools that you see the activity after the school where everything is happening right there. The kids are able to come out, you know, they might have been doing something at school, but they can walk out and, and actually see a soccer game that's going on, or a track meet or something. They're not as pressed for time to be able to stay after and, and, you know, actually get some additional, um, help type of thing, because they know they can still make it, uh, out to the practice or whatever. Whereas when you have to obviously involve yourself with transportation, somebody else potentially transporting you, whatever, it does put limitations on that, that program. So, um, you know, I would hope that the students would also look at it as a major plus to the program versus something, um, you know, just, uh, that we'd like to have. I think it's something that we really should have.
I mean, I think that all students would really appreciate the track. I think that'd be a big one. Because something like, uh, a hundred and sixty kids or something do sprint track, that's the big one.
Huge. That's right. Our participation has soared in track, and they're all being, they're all having to make it over to the Ahearn. So you've got one of our most popular sports right now going on, and we don't have a facility on the high school campus to accommodate it.
I mean, we're surviving right now, but, um, I think that'd definitely be a huge, huge improvement.
Yeah.
Well, it's hard to stay up for the extra help too, when you have to rush.
Yeah, definitely.
Football students have the same thing. It's five days a week of practice, and then you can't stay up for the extra help or whatever you need, if you have running for the bus.
And I'm a, I'm a freshman, and I, I'm on the swim team, and I don't expect, like, Foxborough High to be building a pool here or anything.
Is that on our agenda next?
So I have to try and catch the bus right after school, and I'm a freshman, so I don't have a driver's license or anything. I can't just drive over to the Y, so if I have to stay after, I have to miss the practice completely.
Right.
So I think, uh, if I was on a different sports team and, uh, I knew that they were building a, a complex here so that we, they didn't have to go to a different school, I'd definitely appreciate that.
And there's enough locker room facilities and everything, yeah, so when we.
Well, the long-term thing is if we were to bring football back in total. Right now, football, actually, their locker room is at the IGO, um, in the elementary school, which is. which is not an ideal concept. But when we did the, when we did the locker rooms over for the, for the girls' sports side of things, we actually were able to really accomplish putting in almost four locker rooms within their locker room space. On the boys' side, we weren't able to accomplish that because we didn't have the space to do it. So the consideration down the road is if you were to move the football program back, which I'm not saying that that's necessarily what you're going to do up front here, but if you were to move the football program back, you would have to address potentially the locker room space, you know, for the high school itself down the road, but at least at this point...
It's not urgent, because it's still walkable right now.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, Ahearn facilities are not walkable, but at least the locker room at the IGO is walkable.
Which they do now, I mean, they do that every day.
Just off-campus, just off-campus, yeah, so that's not...
But you can't walk across the fields.
Yeah, that's, that's not the worst thing in the world to have to maintain. Let's see.
Phil, you're talking in the CIP about the track and the grandstand and the bleachers and press box. Can you just remind the public about the status of the concession stand?
Yeah.
Fully funded and spring versus summer, and I believe we've accepted some donations for that.
Yes, we, between use of our own building revolving funds, the amount that the town has put together from, you know, budget resources, we have the money, we believe, to build the full concession. I have to be honest with you, this is really on me at this point, just a few too many projects going at the same time. But my hope is, quite honestly, to this summer, be able to break ground on putting that in. Again, we've done a lot of the pre-planning on it. The biggest use on that particular setup is the fact that we are trying to make full public bathrooms accessible through there. So we have some work being done relative to connecting to the sewer systems and stuff like that to make sure we can do this right. But that's, you know, I'm still in the, in the range of finishing the development of the plans so that we can actually get going on that. But we do have the funding to move forward.
Is there any support the committee can give you to help you?
No, it's just time.
It's a band-aid.
Yeah, find them a couple of extra hours a day.
Well, I don't know if you needed a project manager or designer.
No, I, you know what, I do, I'm fortunate to have the staff I have as far as the, under the building maintenance side of things, and they are trying to pull together a number of the things for me, but it really, in this particular case, will come down to, again, just getting the final layout ready and all the green, that it services all the needs we want to have it service. It was interesting, even when we put the lighting up, you know, we had to do some real fast thinking for how we were going to power that whole setup. And as you can see, there's a small, what seems like a small shed out there. Well, that was all designed for the concessions and for everything else. So we're trying to plan everything so we don't miss a step. And I guess my, my fear has always been that I jump on something too fast and miss something that now I have to go back and redo. So I tend to be a little bit slower in the process, you may not always like that, but I want to get it done once and I want to get it done right, so the committee doesn't waste money on it. Thank you. And I think that's, you know, basically it, so it's our, our annual CIP cost, which is actually down a little bit from the last few years at four hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then obviously, the completion of the athletic field at a million one fifty gets us the total of a million six, so...
Thank you. Phil will vote on this next week, next meeting too.
Yes, yeah. Again, any questions in this area, please send me an email, and I can be prepared to speak to those in the next meeting when we go forward.
Excellent, thank you, Phil, as always, for your diligence. Very good. All right, next up is our 2017 community report.
I'm going to turn it over to Amy Burdles. Dr. Burdles has been working on this for us, updating that. And I think, just if people haven't heard about this before, it's something that we do every January, and I think this is our sixth year, I think it's our sixteenth year of community report. And, I believe so. And what it's intended to do is to highlight some of the things that are going on in our schools, and it's sent to every postal address in Foxborough, businesses, residences, everything, so that we can provide a way for the community to know a little bit more about our schools and where we're strong and to highlight it. So some changes this year. Amy, take us...
All right, on your first page, other than a couple of members' names, like Chris, it's pretty much consistent as far as the past, our strategic objectives, as our strategic plans in its third year are the same, and then we'll see that as a change a year from now. When you look at our enrollment and our students', special education populations, and those eligible for free or reduced lunch, that's the same statistical data that's been there in the past. MCAS data that is for grade ten, being that only grade ten took the MCAS, that is just an update with the last three years, same as with our per pupil expenditure. And then the technology highlights, the difference that you'll see there is we've continued to increase some mobile devices at the middle school from the past.
And that's really based on usage. They're certainly using them a lot more, and we want to be able to provide, if devices such as that are being used regularly as part of the classroom instruction, we want to make sure we have enough for people to be able to access.
And then really, it's the last page where we're looking at some of the other features of what truly is new, or things that we want to highlight, such as the AP honor roll being the third consecutive year. If you look as far as the SAT advanced placement information, that's information that we've reported on in the past, so that's just an update with the latest statistics. And then looking at the continued increase on our AP exams and the number of students taking courses, virtual high school, and then the recognition continuing to be in the top fifty as far as top-ranking public high schools in Boston Magazine. The kindergarten options, it's been updated to reflect what we talked about earlier, as far as to move to free universal, based on the success of town meeting. And then under what's new, continuing with our engineering, that continues to expand as far as senior project as well, opportunities for students to really have those, those real-life experiences, and that's in its third year. Exploring Computer Science being the full course is now offered, so that's really exciting as far as looking at our STEM offerings for high school students. What Diana had talked about earlier, as far as the capstone project being offered to our students, that's really exciting to be able to have that opportunity for, coming from the College Board, that notation as far as a capstone diploma. And then under did you know, a lot of this information continues to be worth highlighting because it is so important when we look at our class sizes and we look at how there are no fees for all of the things that we offer, and how we run our own buses, and the extended day opportunities, the number of extracurricular activities. Our music program, as we've continued to see them with their top honors, our arts with the Scholastic Awards continuing to increase each year, which when you have as many high-performing artists or musicians or academians, it's, it's exciting to see that it continues to increase every year.
It's almost impossible, but we...
Mm-hmm.
Keeps increasing. They keep, the students themselves keep us raising the bar.
They outdo themselves. Or as Alex has quoted at the end of the last article about pizza, they just keep showing off.
I really, I think that it does show, it shows stability and growth on all of these different areas, whether it's activities, whether it's sports, whether it's academics, whether it's volunteers, the support that we have from the community. It's really a report to the community of all of the support that they offer our students and all the opportunities our students have, and the value they get for the tax dollars.
Right. You know, one of the interesting things is that the class size information, for example, so how people translate, how people traditionally think of class size is how many kids are in a class group, and these are really what it is. So we've got eighteen to twenty at the elementary level, twenty-two to twenty-four, middle and high school. But when you, if you're a person that goes to the Department of Ed website, you may see a number like thirteen or fourteen as a class size. That, that doesn't mean that that actually, that all of our classes are about thirteen, more or less, because the way the Department of Ed calculates it is they take the enrollment, they divide it by every professional staff member, that includes therapists and special educators and people who take, and then they divide it, and of course, you get a smaller number. So I think when, sometimes that can be misleading.
That, you know, that's a really good point, because it is confusing, because I mean, it's like, well, gee, I, I know some of my child's classes, my, I'll just pick my junior, and I know some of his classes have twenty kids in them, and some are a little bit smaller, like thirteen, this class, you know, that just doesn't make sense.
We don't have any...
There's six kids at my French class.
Well, yeah, and, and so for an AP class, you might have a, a small number, and that's great, but it's, it's not the norm for, for our class sizes, outside the...
The classroom cohorts are really about this, what you see in the classroom. A class, single classroom cohort is this big.
But it's also good to be able to offer that opportunity too.
Well, right, because if this is an advanced opportunity and there's not, I mean, I, I can remember though, the days where, I mean, I'm going way back, like my kids were in school, but there were the days that at this table, the decision was made to not offer those types of courses if you couldn't get twelve or thirteen kids. And I think I value the philosophy of this committee that, no, we want to be able to continue to provide those opportunities for kids, even if there's not that, but, I mean, those five or six kids deserve AP French, or whatever, is that what you're taking? And not to say, well, if you can't drum up thirteen kids, you're never going to have that opportunity here in Foxborough. So I think over time, that philosophy has really shifted, and I think it's a very good thing for this committee to support, and we appreciate that.
Well, I think we've seen the benefit from it tonight with the teaching and learning highlight, and, and making AP honor roll three years in a row. That's part of it, is offering, you know, quite the wide variety of classes, even if they're a small size, so...
But I would say that the small size is the exception. I think the reality is, we have tried to have courses that are continuations of a, of a course series, rather than just stop it where someone cannot, you know, participate.
That's true.
So I think the, the reality is, yes, you might have a few courses that are on that level, but it's because they came through a whole level to get there, they didn't say they could no longer get that.
Like Spanish one, two, three, four.
Right.
I mean, the numbers do dwindle, because there's only two years required in high school, so you don't want to say there's no pathway beyond Spanish one and two, because we can't get the numbers. So that kind of thing is, it is the, it is the rare exception, though.
Yeah, I think we do value having, you know, eighteen to twenty students at the elementary level. I think we are very fortunate that we haven't had to bump it up to twenty-five, twenty-six kids. That's a lot of kids in an elementary school class.
Yeah, but I still think it's reasonable. I don't think there's excessively lowering of the class size, but I think it's educationally sound, is what I would say.
I do too.
Educationally sound.
I'm just curious, how many kids take the virtual high school classes?
Twenty-five seats each semester.
Twenty-five seats, that's how, yeah. Each semester.
So we have twenty-five, do we use all our seats?
Yes, oh, yes.
Are there requests for more?
Um, no, we, well, I do know Diana about that every year. We don't, I think that's probably so far about the right number. Understanding some are full-year courses, and some seats, there's a semester and semester, so you might, you have more than twenty-five, but probably less than, fewer than fifty kids actually taking it, because some may take a year-long course.
And a couple of our seats go to the eighth graders for their electives.
A few, but not many.
On occasion, not many.
No.
They actually have their own.
Oh, do they have their own set of seats over there?
How many seats do they have?
I actually think that's, that's elected parents, sort of parent base.
Yeah, but I think there's five or six that would...
Five or six eighth graders for virtual classrooms? So more parents could request that?
Well, it's all budget-driven, so...
I see.
Okay. Just curious.
We still think it's about just right number. I don't think we're looking to expand, because you have to expand in significant-sized blocks. So could we use a few more? Maybe, but twenty-five more, probably not.
Are you obligated to take a certain number? Are you obligated to take the twenty-five?
You have to, yes, you buy blocks.
Okay.
You can't do it individually.
Is the twenty-five the smallest block you can buy?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But we, we know that twenty-five is right.
Okay. Interesting. Just curious.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Back on our mobile laptops. IGO Elementary School is so much larger than Borough or Taylor. Why are there only six, thirty-six mobile laptops in that school, while the two smaller ones each have thirty-six?
What we did was, again, the mobile laptops have only really been in place in the district for about a year and a half. And what we, we made a decision to basically put three mobile lap carts into each of the elementary levels at the initial stage here, and we, and we, a lot of that was driven based on the fact that each one had a lab. But if you remember, the Borough only had a half lab at the time.
I do remember.
And where the IGO had a full lab. So there was some offsets based on actual other computers within the building, which there is, because there are more computers in the IGO in general anyway. So it's not saying that we have enough potentially in those mobile carts, because, you know, not that we are buying them for this reason, but when it does come to the state testing, you know, obviously, part of that component is how do you control, you know, entire blocks of students? Obviously, we don't have four or five labs in every building to make that work, and the mobile carts give us that ability. So it's one of the reasons we kind of were, you know, researching that and playing with that process.
Right now.
It's worked very well for us, but it will be, you know, probably something that over time, we may transition more out of the standard PC level into these mobile carts to give, you know, a better support to the curriculum.
It's only our second year with the mobile carts, and I think we should take heart that we don't just buy extra, that we're actually looking at usage. But now that we have mandatory online testing for grade four, we are actually looking at that right now, and the IGO being larger is probably going to, is probably going to need more for this spring, and we're looking at using some of our technology funding for that. So that's a good question, but until now, the demand hasn't been there, so we're just sitting with what we have.
All right, and could I just review one more question, please? Fall 2016, students eligible for free or reduced lunch. Is that up a little bit from last year, the percentages?
It's actually very similar.
They're very similar, depending on which school that you're looking at, you might see slight shifts, but it's, it's remained pretty, pretty consistent.
It's been high sixteens to seventeen the last few years district-wide. I think that's, that isn't very, isn't very a lot.
I think, I think...
But you're definitely not seeing drops yet in that.
No, but you also have to understand the free and reduced schedule. A lot of people hear that and just assume that it's, it's low income, you know, a very low level of income that, that would qualify. It's a graduated scale based on number of people within a family, and it actually can get to a fairly, you know, good-sized salary or earnings level and still qualify for free and reduced. So it's not the poverty level indicator at all. It really is a support.
It's the number of children within the family structure.
Absolutely, and that's, and the calculation is done based on that, so... And actually, I, I think you know, every year, the Food Service puts out a notice in the paper before school starts, encouraging families to look at this as a, you know, an option or a program depending, and it's very confidential. It's not shared, obviously, with the public, it's, it's controlled by Food Service, unless they sign a letter that allows us to share it just for our tuition side. But again, that's also very controlled as to who gets to see that, so... But again, it's not, this is not an indication of poverty or, or thing, this is strictly an indication of whether you meet the guidelines, as the federal government has put it out there.
They send it home in the local packs every year, too.
In our last three years, talking about that number kind of increasing, and to your point, if not going down, going up, that has increased our Title I grant. And so we've moved over a threshold that's allowed us to have that additional, what they call targeted, an EFIG portion, which is an additional about seventy thousand dollars in that grant. We always are teetering on that percentage of whether it could go down, and we watch that, but we've been hovering above that and continuing to stay above, and that's based on the census data and that percentage here with our free or reduced lunch.
Does the IGO do breakfast in the classroom? I know last year I was watching a meeting, and it was discussed.
They have talked about it. We have talked about it. We did, we went to the, oh, we're all there, that's right. I think there are some challenges related to it, but so far, no. We, we looked into it.
We did look into it.
And I know Janice Watts, our new Food Service Director, it is a, an item for her that she's been kind of really seriously looking at to see if it's viable, because again, the, the problem with instituting it is, Food Service is a self-funded program. It doesn't come from town budgets, it doesn't come from your overall budget. So if she does decide to try that, she more than likely would try it on a test basis, So, if she does decide to try that, she more than likely would try it on a test basis, but it has to be self-sufficient to survive, so. She's being very cautious and looking at it, but she is looking at it. I know she's been talking to us on that over the last six months, so.
I know I received, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I know I received this last year when I was a new resident, and I was really impressed by a lot of the stuff in there, especially the class sizes. I think I had like thirty-four in my classes last year. And there's so many things that we could have put in that, that couldn't, couldn't make it.
It's hard to pick and choose.
It is.
I mean, as an example, one of the things that we took out this year is that we're a hundred percent wireless in all the schools because
We know that.
We know that now. It's, it's where they are, so we can, we can take that out. We do have that sentence in there, but we used to have a tracking sheet of, because we were trying to go a hundred percent wireless, we'd have different percentages, so.
Did you know, but now it's just, I like it in technology highlights.
Even that, um, the Special Olympics program that came presented and all that stuff. There's just so much stuff that could have been in here.
I know.
It's true.
It'd be become.
It'd be like eight pages.
We always try to balance, how much do people actually want to read? And how can we make it engaging so that it's little visual snippets and not an essay?
Yeah. Yeah, this is great.
Yeah, I think it looks wonderful.
I know, one of the questions is to bring up, Tina, you had asked as far as the numbers in the AP and looking at that, where we do, and you heard that this evening, the number of students taking AP courses, the US History being part one, part two. So, you have so many students, but as far as the testing year, they take it in part two.
Got it. I was, I was just a little confused by the, the variation in numbers, so I understand that. Thank you.
Amy. Three things quickly. First, great job. You know how much I enjoy this document. Second, it's always an opportunity for me to come up with new ideas. So, let me just throw out two. One is, I wonder if it would be advantageous to have some copies of this at town meeting? Just a thought. Second, second idea, you know what I'd love to see here, and I know space is at a premium and you've worked really hard. And I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea, a list of either the full list of colleges we send our graduates to or a subset. The full list might require a whole page, and I know it becomes a problem, that's a fifth page. But there's probably some things we could take out of here and put sample. But as I read through this every year one more time, I, I think that would be, I think that would resonate with people who read it. You know, either they see their alma mater or they see, you know, sample schools that we're getting students into. And, you know, I was just thinking as we were talking here, I mean, maybe we don't need, just to throw out ideas, and then I'll leave it up to you to decide, but maybe we don't need students eligible for free and reduced lunch at every building. Or maybe we don't need special ed at every building, you know, and maybe that frees up a little bit of room. Or maybe you can list the AP statistics with some of the data that's on page two, and that would allow you some room on page, well, I don't know for this, page three. I'll leave that up to you, but just some thoughts for our next go-rounds.
At college night, they, they, you know, when the kids are getting prepped here, they have that list.
Have that whole list that's there.
Need list, though, it's not always completed.
But not everybody sees that.
Right, that's, so it's a really great idea. That's the only thing we would see.
You know, I'm trying, that would really go on the second page. Do we really need kindergarten options anymore?
I don't know.
Hopefully not.
Never went after this year.
Hopefully not. I was just wondering, if we, if we need that right now, like is the typical postal address that's gonna be there? Do they care about this anymore? Because before, it was really important to say, we offer both, you're gonna have to pick, you have to pay for one. I'm wondering if sample, sample list, because you're right, the list is too long, if we, if that might not be better there.
I'll mock it up.
You know, we could extend the ban, the banner thing from Foxborough High School.
Yeah, because that would go on.
Extended day, because extended day is still something that families would want to know.
Yeah.
That we offer before and after care in each of our elementary schools. That is so important to a family, their kids not transported anywhere. And so, yeah, that's something I'm thinking.
Other information that's important, I don't know if they're still doing it, but the National Honor Society has ours and they tutor for free of charge. So, it's really important for parents, because we often see on, on websites, people looking for tutors for their children. And just more information.
I think it'd be hard, though, to pick out one group at the high school and what they do.
That's true. That's true.
But I think the colleges, because I think of this like a PR thing. So, so that, people would be very interested in the colleges our kids get into.
Yeah, for those who haven't walked the halls, halls of Foxborough High School outside of guidance, they do such a nice job of just putting up where students have been accepted.
We can look at that. We, actually, we could, that's why we present it to you before we mail it out.
Right.
Like even your suggestion of making it the community report, where it's just being that, I mean, all good suggestions.
Every year, I get one or two.
No, it's good, though, because when you look at it and you think about what are. I'm sure you do. What's new? And it's to the point of really deciding to have that balance, but.
For what it's worth.
It's a great idea.
It's a good idea. It is. I, I support that.
For the very select audience that sees that list. Yeah, and you received it and you read it. There you go. I like it.
All right.
Any other thoughts or questions?
I like that idea.
I like how it's not all just test results and it gets a whole wide-ranging view of the Foxborough.
An eclectic report.
I like that, too.
I guess the only thing that isn't included on here is any sort of athletics. I mean, I know we have them, but under the do you know, we've got our extracurriculars, the music, the art, leadership.
Athletics are a given.
I think that's, that's why.
No fees for athletics, but yeah, I guess.
Well, what about the field hockey?
Well, we could add athletics here, a wide range of extracurriculars as well as, well, I mean, I think every high school offers an athletic program.
X number of teams or.
Or we could do how the tennis team, was it girls tennis that won the championship in the field hockey? We could put the state champions or from the last year.
It was just, just one thing. I mean, I know it is a given, but we have had some success.
You know, I think the other thing that sort of I do think sometimes is, we don't want to make justice about high school.
Right. That, too.
But I think, I think the colleges is something that has a wide rate of interest, but I think that's why we, you know, stuff like the Senate, you don't want to make the whole, although it's becoming pretty much high school-oriented, but we don't want to make it just about a high school report. It's really a K-12. I think that can be, that can be part of our challenge, is how do you sort of capture some of the. It really has become more high school, almost like exit result oriented.
You know, maybe with the music program, just since we're talking about making it not just all about high school, we could highlight that the music program actually begins in the fifth grade and is offered from, you know, initially.
Well, they would say it begins in kindergarten.
That's right. I know.
Anyway.
Well, let's do, they're offered the opportunity. Yeah, it's true, we do have music early on, but they're offered the instrument.
It's all part of the same program.
What about recorder, Tina? The infamous recorder.
I'm not gonna say anything about the recorder.
The which? The recorder?
They have that in elementary level. I forget, with third or fourth grade?
Remember it well.
Probably a thousand of them around Foxborough that could be collected.
It gives something to think about. I think for this year, we can certainly maybe make a little transition to colleges, because that's of interest to many people. I don't know who else, let's see.
I don't think you need to rework it a lot. It looks great.
No, it does look wonderful. Thank you for.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the feedback, but yeah, it's gonna be.
It looks great. All right.
Another job well done, Amy. Thank you.
When, when do these generally go out? I forget.
January.
January.
This month, yeah.
This month. Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the acceptance of donation.
Yeah, so this was a wonderful surprise. The Alliance Energy Company, Alliance Energy LLC out of Connecticut, evidently sort of, I don't want to say randomly selects, but selectively selects different schools from many different areas to, to help with, to donate to. So, I think one year, a few years ago, it was the high school, and this year, for reasons unknown to Mr. Stanton himself, they selected the Vincent M. Igo School, and they've made a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars. And this is from a global partnership program.
We didn't apply for this?
No, that's what I thought, too. This is why, you remember the last time, technically, remember it said donations plural?
Yeah.
This was one of them, but I didn't understand it, so I wanted to hold it till I did. So, I thought it was somebody, I couldn't figure out who applied. Mike said no one did. It was a lovely surprise. And so, Global Partners LP announced that it's all town convenience stores and New England mobile retail gas distributors participate in ExxonMobil's Education Alliance Program, which is a nationwide initiative to enhance math and science learning at K-12 institutions. So, they have chosen three hundred and forty-eight schools throughout the Northeast, which is where they do business, to receive educational grants for materials and program, programming, such as learning tools, lab supplies, educational trips. And the grants come out in December. So, they have since two thousand, Educational Alliance Program has awarded more than eighteen million dollars to local schools through Exxon and mobile retailers. So, I guess this is part of the community outreach from a major company.
Good people.
Of course, very welcome. So, that's, it's to go toward that initiative, so definitely around math and science initiatives. And the Igo School is very eager to, to plan what they want to do for math and science enhancements.
You know, I'm sure you saw this, and, but, but it reads as though the application came from the local mobile station.
That's what I'm thinking.
Which is, which is closest in proximity to the Igo School.
It could.
That would make sense.
So, I suspect that might be.
That's great.
So, you know, it might be interesting to, well, it might be interesting to thank the store, which is, the name is at the bottom of the third page.
Well, since I'm there every day for my Icy Diet Coke, I will ask, to whom I should address that? I, I think that's a great idea.
Good suggestion.
Yeah. I just got gas there today, so I'm helping the cause.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion to accept this donation with gratitude?
I'd like to make a motion to accept this donation of five hundred dollars for the Igo, Vincent Igo School from the Alliance Energy LLC with gratitude.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor of accepting the donation, five zero zero. All right, Ico quarterly report.
Yes, this is familiar to you. So, each quarter, we get a little update from the Special Education Collaborative that we belong to called the By County Collaborative, or its nickname, Byco. And as you can see, they usually provide a few little bullets. I particularly like to highlight that their enrollment is increasing, which is great. We want a very healthy collaborative membership. They're presently at two, two hundred and seventeen students, which is thirty-four students ahead of this time last year. So, one of the primary things they've noted about that, though, is, is the majority of the increase in enrollment in Byco, no surprise to people at this table, is in the programs that are designed to serve students with social, emotional, and behavior challenges. So, they are really rising up to meet the need of more in-depth needs that we see on behalf of students. So, due, due to that increase, they're almost at capacity in terms of their space and staffing, which is great, because you don't want them to have extra space that they're renting that they don't need. So, they actually are looking for a few other spaces, not that we're interested in providing those spaces, but they are looking, they have a partnership with the tech collaborative now that they share some space in the area as well. The other thing I'd like to highlight, which I had before, the professional development offerings, I think they're really stepping up to the plate and providing more professional development to the member districts, such as the Sheltering Subversion Course, SEI, we call it the SEI cor, and course. They're now running an administrative course. We don't need that, because through the auspices of Dr. Burdo, she actually finagled to have an administrative course on site about a year and a half ago. So, our administrators were able to attend that, she's so proactive. Three, SEI Long Courses, we call it, which is the full course, Crisis Prevention Intervention, or CPI. And they've had a two-day behavioral health symposium. And they're also now starting to offer registered behavior technician or RBT courses, which is taking place of the old certification in a, a BCBA or Behavior Analyst Certification Program. So, they're continuing to do some innovative things, and I think the collaborative is certainly growing and providing more services to districts, which is excellent.
Thank you. Do we need to accept this?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it forward to us. All right, moving on. We are ahead of schedule. Nine oh five, we are on to other matters. Mrs. Tannelli, do you want to start?
You have in your informational matters, the Taylor Elementary School Principal Search Timeline. As you know, we have an interim principal, Joe Russo, in there this year, who is doing an absolutely fabulous job. If you haven't gotten a chance to get to look, to know Joe, please stop by the Taylor School whenever you want to introduce yourself. He's very happy to be part of our community in his post-retirement year. As you know, as a retiree, he can't stay on, and we had promised to do a search anyway. So, we are starting. I went to the Taylor Faculty Meeting last Thursday and presented them with this timeline. This month of January, we will, Amy and I will be conducting focus groups at the Taylor School. I don't have the dates for you tonight, but anyway, not Taylor parents. But the one for parents, the one for staff members, where we get input into what they're looking for in terms of the characteristics and the needs and in terms of the next educational leader for the building. We did advertise on January fourth, right when we came back from the break on school spring, and on the Elementary Principals Association website called MESA, as their professional organization. We are closing the applications at the end of this month. I think on the ads, we put applications preferred by January twenty-fifth, so it doesn't leave anybody out things that continue to. Bye, thank you. Good luck with your homework. So, let's see. Amy, as you know, the Assistant Superintendent conducts the screening and interview, initial screening and interview team. So, Dr. Burdos will be heading up that team. We will be this week seeking parents who are interested in serving. We would like two parent representatives. So, we will be seeking those representatives for the team. We are in the process of seeking faculty, staff, interested parties.
Do you need a school committee member?
Yes, we would like a school committee member. That's exactly where I'm going to. So, I think we're going to have, we have a few administrators who have volunteered. We will have three staff members, we will have two parent representatives, and we're looking for a school committee member. And you can see the rest of the timeline kind of falls from there.
Well, if there are any Taylor parents watching, I, I was a parent representative when Mrs. Naylor retired and we hired Mr. Regan, and you ran that search as Assistant Superintendent. And it was, it was a really rewarding experience. Bruce's wife, Michelle, served on the committee with me. And I encourage you, if you're interested, to definitely get involved.
So, you'll be getting an email from me this week, seeking parent representatives.
And is anyone on the committee interested in serving on the search committee?
Would you like to? Lovely, thank you. It was a, was a fantastic process.
Middle school process.
Uh, we'll be starting that soon. That's an assistant principal search. That actually starts at the school level. So, we will advertise and sue, the principal actually cheers that initial search with other memberships. So, we're waiting to get this rolled out, and then we will be advertising for that shortly and getting that rolled out.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, if everybody is okay with it, then Chris will be our representative on the.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions about the timeline?
Well, it looks good, and I know it was a really, really well-done process when you ran it. And I served on the search committee when we hired Dr. Einzel with you, and Steve and I were the school committee representatives. And we run an excellent search, so can't wait to meet.
Initial search, too. And Mr. Stanton's.
Mr. Stanton, so.
Been here a while now. I know, six years in.
We've done a good job with all of those, so I expect.
And I, and I did a Ms. Burdo's a couple of times, and I did a Dr. Martis, and I did a Debbie Spinelli.
I did it as a parent.
Yeah.
I've done many.
It's a, it is a really interesting process, and I think you really are contributing to the future of that school. So, we want people who are passionate about contributing to the future of the school and having a voice in that. And, you know, we get the best candidates when the whole community and all the constituent groups have buy-in toward the right match. I think it does require multiple perspectives and consensus around who's the right match for a particular school. So, that's why we really like our process, and we have confidence we'll be able to continue with the timeframe. And I hope to have an announcement to the school committee on March twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Good luck with your search process.
Thank you.
If anyone's interested.
Moving right along. Okay. And then the only thing I have, winter athletic season is often running and pretty interesting. So, it's been really fun to watch. Oh, I was gonna ask Dimitri if his, we had a couple of cancellations on Saturday.
The swim team was canceled, yeah.
And two others, and our wrestlers, though, went north to Chelmsford and got back safely, so that was good.
They did well, too.
Thank you to the DPW who responded when I asked them to make sure that the, they were gone all day from six AM until almost six PM. But the DPW was great, and I contacted them on Saturday and said there'll be a bus returning late in the evening, to late evening, and could they make sure that it's plowed so that the cars can get out, and it was done. So, I want to thank them.
Good timing of that storm, huh? No, no.
Oh, I, I love Saturday storms. Please may every storm be on a Saturday, because then it's Sunday cleanup day, so Saturday's even better than Sunday.
Yes, it is.
So.
And who did the girls play? Norway or?
Oh, that's right.
They're playing tomorrow night. Girls are playing again tomorrow night.
Who are they playing this time?
Stotin.
Oh, no, but that was pretty cool, playing another.
Playing Nor, country, the Norwegian.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that came during school.
That was during the school break.
Yes, that was pretty neat.
Playing girls, the boys' basketball game last Friday was awesome. I mean, I do like winning by a lot, but anyway, just because I don't have to be so nervous throughout the game. But it's really, we have some, we have a really great team, so I want to commend them, and they're working hard, but it shows.
Very exciting. Bill, did you want to give us a little update on where we're at with our Borough project?
Yes, and I, and I did do some double checking just to make sure what we need.
Thank you.
The subcommittee completed its interview process today for the OPMs. We actually had about thirty originally show interest. We had twelve actually send in proposals. We narrowed that down to five, and we interviewed the five between last Friday and today. The subcommittee came up with a decision, and Colliers International was chosen as the firm we'd like to move forward based on feeling that they're the best match for the town and the project that we're facing. We had some very good options, which was really nice.
Really good.
And quite honestly, it was very difficult to get them to our number one, but based on the guidelines under the MSBA, the fact that you have already authorized the Subcommittee and the school committee, building committee, to represent you, we don't need an additional vote at this point, but we will be opening negotiations with Colliers International. Actually, I already just had a conversation about an hour ago with them, and they, so we will hopefully have that done very quickly. Our goal is to try to get to the first, be the first one to come into the MSBA's process this time, which would be on May sixth.
February sixth.
I mean, February, sorry, February sixth.
February sixth.
Yeah.
That's coming up.
And to move through that.
We're moving along.
Yeah, so I think at this point, again, you know, it's, it's been moving fairly quickly here, and, but we, we really do believe we have a good candidate for us to, to work with us as part of our team.
We had a few really strong companies, really strong. I felt really good after interviewing them, and I know you did, that we had some really good choices, so, but.
Yeah, I agree, we did have some, some excellent responses, and we narrowed it down, and had some very good interviews Friday and today.
It was interesting for me, as somebody that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but it was really interesting to see how they decided to present and put themselves forward, really fascinating.
I'm confident they'll do a good job.
Yes.
Well, thank you for the update. Anyone else, other matters, Marilyn?
Yeah, on Wednesday, we have our next safe meeting.
All right, thank you.
Our direct task force to the town, and Thursday, I have the honor of judging at our DECA competition, which is pretty exciting. Last year was, for anyone who doesn't know, last year was the first year DECA came to the school, and they competed, and they ended up going to Nashville and won some awards there, and last year, they only had twenty-six competing, this year, they have forty-four.
That's awesome.
So it's already increased since last year. It's, it's really going, I mean, Mr. McCabe has done a fabulous job with this, so I'm pretty excited, so I'll give you the results next month.
Sounds good.
Hopefully the kids will come in.
Yep, that's great. Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, Foxborough High is hosting the National History Day, regional competition this year.
What date?
It is in March, I don't, I forget the date right now.
Okay.
It saves me a trip.
The history?
National History Day.
National History, regional competition.
National